Amy, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation of the great power, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Anne, would you call the roll?
Yes, Vice Mayor Saleh.
Here.
Mayor Lecliter.
Here.
Mr. Reiner.
Here.
Mr. Keenan.
Mr. Msiezerker.
Here.
Mrs. Boring.
Here.
Mr. Gerber.
Great, thank you. We'll begin this evening with a proclamation and then a couple of special presentations. To begin with, it is Hunger Action Month, and I'm going to go over to the podium here, and I will be joined by the Dublin Food Pantry's Board Chair, Michael Wibble, and the Executive Director, Nancy Johnson. You'll come over here and stand next to me. Thank you. The proclamation reads as follows: Whereas hunger and poverty are issues of grave concern in the United States and the state of Ohio, and whereas raising awareness about the need to combat hunger in every part of our state and to provide additional resources for the citizens of Dublin is critical, and whereas the city of Dublin is committed to working with the Mid-Ohio Food Bank and the Dublin Food Pantry in educating people about the role and importance of food banks in addressing hunger and raising awareness of the need to devote more resources and attention to hunger issues, and whereas more than 250,000 individuals in Ohio rely on food provided by the Mid-Ohio Food Bank annually, and whereas the Mid-Ohio Food Bank distributed more than 48 million pounds of food and groceries in 2012 through its network of food pantries, soup kitchens, shelters, and other community organizations, and whereas food banks across the state will promote numerous events throughout the month of September to bring awareness and attention to encourage involvement in efforts to end hunger in their local community, now therefore I, Mayor Timothy A. Lecliter, on behalf of Dublin City Council, do hereby proclaim September 2013 as Hunger Action Month in the city of Dublin and encourage all citizens to support the mission of the Dublin Food Pantry and the Mid-Ohio Food Bank. So I'll give this to you and hand you the mic if you'd like to make a couple of comments.
Thank you very much for having us here today. The Dublin Food Pantry is dedicated to making sure that no one in our community goes hungry. Our mission and our vision is to ensure that no one in Dublin is in hunger. We thank the Dublin City Council for bringing attention to this important issue and declaring September to be Hunger Action Month. Thank you very much.
I just want to add, as everybody here knows, these are very, very challenging times. Our numbers keep increasing, but we are able to meet this challenge because Dublin is a very, very generous community, and we rely so much on the local grocers that give us food, on all the food drives we have, and I see Sandra back there. We collected almost seven tons of food at the Irish Festival, almost 14,000 pounds. So, thank you, Dublin.
Thank you both.
If I could ask real quickly, if you wouldn't mind answering for, we have a TV audience, a lot of folks tune into these meetings. If someone has not been involved before but wants to be involved with the Food Pantry, how might they get in touch with you to do that?
We have a website, so all you have to do is go to www.dublinfoodpantry.org.
Okay.
And we have a website, and if you want to volunteer, we also, on that site, you can get in touch with our volunteer coordinator. If you want to do a food drive, email me. So all that information is on our website.
Okay, thank you very much.
Also, in conjunction with Hunger Action Month, we've established food drop-off sites at the library, the Dublin Rec Center, and the Dublin Community Church at the lower level. And any time that anyone wants to drop off food, they can do it at the pantry at 81 West Broad Street at the lower level of the Dublin Community Church.
Great, thanks.
Thanks very much. Next, we have an update from the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission. Excuse me, with us is the Executive Director, William Murdock. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, members of council, mayor. I'm William Murdock. I'm the Executive Director of the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, or MORPC, and I appreciate the invitation to come and give you a brief update and introduction on MORPC. Today, I wanted to briefly introduce myself and to reintroduce my organization so that you can understand its role for Dublin. I do want to start by thanking Dublin for their continued involvement and support as a member of MORPC through the years on so many levels, and I want you to know that, if you don't remember anything else that I say, know that my primary goal as director is to make sure that we're a member-serviced organization, we're a member-directed organization, a member-focused organization. So if anything, we're going to be looking at better tools, better services, to make sure we're supporting you and the good work that you're doing out here in the city and to your neighbors around the region. I also want to point out that thanks to your city manager, Marcia Craigby, who provides great service to MORPC on our administrative committee, both from a personal standpoint to me and my staff, but also being a good voice of Dublin on that committee, and also to Councilwoman Chinici Zerker, who is our Regional Policy Roundtable Chair at MORPC and a longtime commissioner, as well as the numerous staff members at Dublin who we get to work with on all different work groups and different projects. So about me, I think it helps to know where somebody's coming from, so you know where somebody's going and where an organization might go. I'm a central Ohio guy. The bulk of my career has been in local government or focused on local government. I had the pleasure to work in Gehanna for about 10 years, focusing on planning and development. Then I went to state government, where I focused on programs to help local government, things like the Clean Ohio Fund, and energy programs and housing programs, and really was blessed with an opportunity to come to MORPC earlier this year so that I could keep working with local government in a different area. So if anything, know that I'm coming to MORPC and looking to lead this organization, keeping local government in some of the questions that you may have in mind, because I'm new to MORPC, and I've got some of the same questions that you may have about it and some of the same perspective that you might hope that I would bring to it. So about MORPC, MORPC is a member-based organization. I keep saying that, and that's because at our heart, that's what we are. We're 42 local governments around central Ohio, including Dublin, in a 12-county region, and we work with our members on a number of major focal areas, things like transportation, infrastructure, environmental, energy issues. We also do housing and policy, and I just want to briefly touch on the things that we do in each of those areas. Certainly, the city of Dublin knows our role in transportation very well. MORPC is the transportation agency for central Ohio as designated by the state and federal government, and that means that we work on bringing our members together to identify where federal transportation dollars are spent in central Ohio. With transportation, we cover everything from highways and freights to walkability and biking and safety. We look at trends in traffic and growth and make sure that our infrastructure is prepared, and we coordinate closely with your staff here at Dublin to make sure that we're meeting your needs. There are real benefits to Dublin for being a part of MORPC, and in the transportation world, I know you're very much aware of the 270-33 interchange, and want to applaud Dublin for their leadership and innovation in this project and working with ODOT and MORPC. This was no easy task. It was a project request out of cycle that really took advantage of an opportunity, and your leadership helped us get it done in the region and to get unanimous support from our board for that project. It's more than just a Dublin project, and I know that you know that. It's a regional project. It helps everything from air quality and congestion, but it's also a major economic growth corridor and jobs corridor for central Ohio. So we're appreciative of the chance to work with you on that and to get that project done. We also know that Dublin has been a leader in a number of transportation areas. Things like bikeways and complete streets are second nature in Dublin, and we appreciate the chance to work with you on those issues. MORPC is also a housing agency. We work around the region in a shared services capacity with a lot of our members to administer their state and federal housing programs. How this affects the city of Dublin, we do offer countywide services in mortgage and financial counseling, so some of your low-income citizens facing hardships may be receiving counseling from our folks at MORPC. We're also focused on environmental and sustainability initiatives, and you should know that we benefit from Terry Fogler as the Chair of our Sustainable Growth Working Group, and he's working with us on a number of initiatives around sustainability. This area of MORPC focuses on everything from local foods initiatives connecting our agricultural producers to our suburban and urban areas, to Green Pact, which is a local government initiative to focus on sustainability, and also on things like air quality. So if you ever hear of the air quality alerts being issued for central Ohio, MORPC is where those warnings initiate. The last major area we do is policy, and this is something that, again, with Councilwoman Chinici Zerker, we benefit from her leadership, where local governments in central Ohio come together around issues of policy on state and federal policies that affect local governments. So we have an opportunity to bring our members together to really look at the impact of pending legislation and existing programs and make recommendations on how to improve them for your citizens, how to improve them for the local governments, and know that when we walk in to state legislator offices, we can speak with the voice of 42 members, saying this is a common point of agreement with the local governments in central Ohio. So there's great benefit to being in that. Also, as an aside, we do various programming throughout the year, member services and sharing. We bring all different levels of staff together. We bring finance administrators together and help host them, GIS. We're happy to be partnering with Dublin on an IT Shared Services Analysis Project along with the Metropolitan Educational Council. We have human resources contacts with you on different information, and lots of levels of involvement. So I appreciate the invitation again. I look forward to working with you at MORPC, and I really hope that we can be of service to help Dublin and its residents succeed even more. So with that, I'll take any questions?
Well, I just want to say thank you for visiting our meeting this evening, and also to thank you personally on behalf of the city council for MORPC's support for the I-270-33 interchange improvement. We certainly do appreciate that. As you pointed out, you know, there was a little bit different way of going about this, and, you know, with your cooperation and the city of Dublin's innovative approach to this, you know, we've been able to advance the project by several years. And I think it's also important to point out, as you did, you know, that it benefits not only Dublin, but the region, you know, in terms of jobs and commerce and so forth. So, you know, that's an important point to make. But certainly appreciate the city manager's participation in your organization. Obviously, we think that's a great benefit to our community and the organization, as well as Councilmember Chinici Zerker. So anybody else? Comments?
I did have one additional thing, if I could. I'd be remiss not to introduce my staffer who's with me. As part of our member services strategy, we hired a new membership coordinator, and Eileen Luby is joining us in that position. So she should be a familiar face to you as we go forward, and I wanted to point that out because this is her first day on the job. And I said, "Well, we're going to start in Dublin," so I look forward to having her here. She comes to us as the former Director of the New Albany Chamber of Commerce, so we're excited to have her on board.
Well, great, congratulations, your first long day. Probably first of many. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Next, we have an update from the Dublin Convention and Visitors Bureau. Eric Belfridge, Board President, and Scott Dring, Executive Director. Good evening.
Good evening, mayor, council members. Thank you for inviting us this evening. Before I turn the floor over to Scott Dring, I'd like to mention three things. One is our recent organizational assessment that was done, our digital media strategy, and our fiscal year 2014 board members. In 2012, we engaged Zeitgeist Consulting, who's a nationally renowned destination marketing organization consultant. They evaluated our market as well as our efforts to raise awareness of Dublin as a destination, and they gave us a very positive assessment, as well as providing us with some best-practice recommendations to keep Dublin Convention and Visitors Bureau on the cutting edge. One of those initiatives was a recommendation to do a new website, and if you look at irishasandattitude.com, you'll see our new website, and it's optimized for mobile use. It actually recognizes the type of device you're using, and so if you look at it on your smartphone, it's very easy to see. You can check by restaurants, lodging establishments, shopping, activities, events, and it's very easy for us to use and to provide fresh content. And then finally, our 2014 Board Direct Board Packet that you've passed around, or that Scott's passed around there, shows our board members in '14, including Sandra Kowalik of OCLC, who will be the incoming Board President, as well as Troy Allen and Phil Smith, who are the city council reps. Scott?
Thanks, Eric. Good evening, everyone. We'd like to kind of start off real quickly, and we have a lot of time here, to show you a very brief video that kind of recaps the largest event, one of the largest events we've ever hosted here in the city of Dublin, so.
Top Gun football is an elite football camp that brought high school and middle school players from all over the United States, Canada, and Europe to Dublin at Jerome High School this past July. An amazing event, bringing the most skilled players, literally from punters, quarterbacks, linebackers, every position. Around 1,500 kids came to the city.
Each camp about 800 kids from around the country, and then they meet and work with our NFL faculty to keep improving their skills.
It's really about the passionate football player that wants to improve themselves.
I mean, it's the best of the best. I mean, who don't want to be best of the best? If you're the best, compete against the best, and you want to show people that you are the best.
Top Gun is not just about football, it's about the experience, and they realize that these kids are giving up their time, and they want to make it the most amazing experience these kids have ever had. So when they come to the camp, the opening ceremonies were staged by live productions. We had special effect lighting, a DJ playing music. They made these kids feel like they were rock stars coming into it. So besides that, they are coached by 60 former NFL players and coaches. They literally get the All-Star treatment. This was an amazing event for Dublin on multiple levels, really overall, the hospitality-wise. It filled our city in a time where our city really doesn't have a whole lot going on. When they got here, they obviously realized what an amazing city Dublin is, with all of our infrastructure facilities that we have to offer. They realized what we realized. It's an amazing city to host an event.
Dublin has opened their arms and put on a great show for us here.
Dublin is a wonderful community in terms of its embrace of what we want to achieve. It's really gone above and beyond. It's really gone incredibly well.
So obviously, it was a huge, huge success. Excuse me. Overall, it attracted about 4,500 room nights. What does that mean? It'll be the largest event we have in the city of Dublin this year. The Memorial Tournament attracted about 3,900, so it was larger than the Memorial Tournament this past year. To kind of put respect, you always hear when we talk about room nights, what does all that mean? If you just look at hotel revenue alone, that's about $500,000 for Dublin's hotels locally. And you've heard me talk before that visitor spending-wise, when people come to Dublin, the most they spend is not on a hotel, it's food and beverage. So you're talking, it's easy to say millions and millions of dollars that were sunk into our community in that two-week period in July. Also, we've worked closely with them. We want to have them back. You can see they're very happy with Dublin. They're very interested in bringing it back. We've talked to the city schools. They've committed to work with us and hosted at Jerome High School as well in the upcoming year. Our board has voted to make a financial commitment as well, and we look forward to working with you guys as well to hopefully wrap that up and bring that huge event back to our city again next year as well. Also, next year, in addition to hopefully Top Gun, we will be hosting the U.S.-Australian Rules National Football Championship that I think we talked about several years ago. It's finally reality, it'll be here in the fall of 2014, and it will attract about 40 teams from all over the country next October at Dory Fields. Again, a huge event, a lot of exposure, a lot of economic impact in our community as well. As you know, our efforts go well beyond just attracting new events to our city. We're a marketing agency that works to raise awareness of Dublin as a destination across the country. In your packet's our marketing plan. It's a fluid document, but you can see there our five key objectives. It breaks out hundreds and hundreds of tactics that we have going on to try to meet those goals and those objectives that we've set forth to our board. And again, each tactic we have has a measurable goal that we look closely at so we can be accountable for at the end of the day. Obviously, the President's Cup is pretty much, we're working that on an hourly basis at this point. We're excited about it coming. I think it's less, what, 35 days, the last time I checked this morning, so it's getting close. One of the unique campaigns we started this summer was the Top 18 Moments in Dublin Golf History. The reason we wanted to do, we wanted to do something to kind of commemorate our deep history in golf and really promote Dublin as a great golf destination, so we've done that. We've had over, I think, 1,500 votes by the local community voting on what those Top 18 Moments will, and we'll kind of roll those out as we get closer to the event as well. Again, thank you for all your support. Thank you for the Top Gun. Obviously, without your support and city support, it would not have been here, and it would not have been a reality. So we appreciate all your support on that and all the events we work to get here. So thank you very much.
God, if I may, I wanted to bring out something about Top Gun that I haven't seen anywhere else. I had the opportunity, because of my day job, to volunteer. The Top Gun organization needed volunteers from the community to staff their registration, and so I was able to do that one morning, and it was really, really exciting to see all the kids from literally all over the country. We had some international kids. But what I don't think folks are aware of is that organization, because of the agreement by some folks that run the Dublin Special Olympics, which is a new organization split off from Northwest Special Olympics, they gave a very generous, I think, $4,000 donation to that organization, which is huge, in return for the volunteers staffing the registration and the, you know, lunch and that sort of thing for the coaches and so forth. So that's another huge benefit. I know that everybody was really grateful from the Special Olympics, and that's something, it's, you know, a wonderful thing about Top Gun being here, and I've not heard about that, so I wanted to make everybody aware.
Great, thanks.
Scott, I'm sort of curious, that was a brutally hot week, that Top Gun week, and did you have any negative feedback on that at all? I mean, did you tell them that was a freak week?
No, no. I mean, they loved it here. The previous four years, they were in Virginia, and it was all field turf, so that field turf, I think, raises the temperature another 10 or so, and obviously, we had one field turf, so they love the grass. I thought, you know, cooled them down a little bit. They're used to the heat. I mean, the kids are so enthusiastic to be here. I mean, they're the top of the top. There's, what, 42 camps, regional camps, state camps, all over the country, and they invite only to the top echelon each of those camps. So the kids coming here, it could be 500 degrees, and, you know, they would be excited just to be part of the camp. So the kids loved it. We heard nothing but positive comments from, you can see from the event organizers as well.
Okay.
That's great. Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Eric. Appreciate it. Moving on to that portion of our agenda that allows for citizen comments regarding items not on tonight's agenda, and I would remind folks of the five-minute time limit. First on our list is Mike Beckley. If you'd state your name and address for the record, please?
Yeah, Mike Beckley, 5839 Maurey Court, Dublin. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. This is my third time here. The first couple of times, we talked about the fence, the proposed fence, the fence that was going up. We talked about the dangers of the fence and the problems of the fence. We talked about deer, we talked about pets, we talked about kids. So far, we've had two deer killed. As we know, deer do get killed in Dublin. It happens, lots of reasons. This was particularly traumatic to the neighborhood to have Dublin police in their backyards with shotguns shooting deer as they hopped the fence. I hope you've all read the police reports. They're pretty detailed and pretty graphic, and they're worth your time. So the announcement today about the rail on top of the fence will help some of the problems. I think that's part of the solution. The second deer died attempting to jump the fence and didn't get impaled. It broke both its legs and was squirming on the ground on a flowerbed when the Dublin police came up with a shotgun and killed it. Again, people are in the house looking out the windows, kids could be there, your grandkids could be watching this. This is not acceptable in Dublin. So the height is also the problem. We've talked about the height for many months here. Some people actually call us a five-foot fence. Of course, we know the city code is four feet. This fence is actually five foot five to five foot seven, depends how they put it up, but it's, there's a lot of different clearances, and five foot eight in one place, the posts. So the third thing is, the fence is installed in different places. On the fifth fairway, where the deer was killed, it's on top of a hill, so the deer climb up the hill and try and jump. Basically, it's a seven-foot fence from the deer's launching point, if you like. So it's a problem. I guess the top rail helps for now. They've taken some sections out. I have no idea if that helps or not. We hope it does. I think one thing they could do tomorrow is to lower the fence down. There's five to six inches of clearance. It's just bolted together. If they go out there tomorrow, the city could ask them to do it, drop the fence down to a, I guess every inch will probably help. I don't know the answer to that, but I don't know how high deer jump. Michelle thinks they jump 15 feet. I'm not sure I agree, but there's lots of small deer. There's lots of babies, there's fawns, so it's not, we're not talking about optimum jumping height. These deer have been here for a long time. We've been in Muirfield, people, for 40 years. The deer walk through my yard every year on almost the exact same path in the winter. You can see, it's a long ingrained habit, instinct, whatever it is. And they come to my yard, and they eat my hostas, they eat my daylilies, and I give John a hundred bucks a year for deer spray that doesn't really work, but we live with them. So future, you know, the President's Cup is a one-time event. We wouldn't be here if it wasn't for the President's Cup, we don't believe. We're asking this as a one-time fence. We don't need this kind of problem. We think the fence could be modified. They could cut the top pieces off, the bottom pieces off, and just basically compact it to about four feet, four and a half feet. Wouldn't be ideal. I talked to Dan Sullivan last week and suggested maybe he use the new structure, the metal poles, and put up a green, plastic fence similar or better than they had before. Part of the problem with the plastic fence was there were little rebars in the ground, and people pushed it down, and it wasn't very secure. With these black poles on eight-foot centers, it would be a very significant temporary plastic fence that would address his needs, I think. So Dublin, in June, announced a special event permit process, and in theory, that could be helpful. In practice, it hasn't really worked. I want to give you an example. First, the five-foot fence went up, and then we heard the six-foot fence was coming. So we talked to Michelle and Marcia about it, and this is the way it worked. Michelle got an email from the tournament saying, FYI, we're putting up a six-foot fence in two days. Michelle responded, "We know nothing about it. You didn't bring up the meetings. It's not in the plan. It's not in the permit." They go back and forth. Finally, Michelle says, "Fine, we'll just add it to the permit." So Dublin is taking what they're doing and creating a permit to suit what they're doing, and that's not what the permit process is about. The permit process says nine days in advance, they should be, they should apply, should give you the details, make some decisions, and put stuff up. The last thing is city council. I've been here three times, and not one of you has asked me a question, made a comment, or a commitment on this fence, and I'm disappointed, quite frankly, by all of you, and we view this as your fence, city's fence, city council's fence, and I would hope somebody would have made a comment by now or taken a position, either side. I respect both sides. I'd be happy, would have been happy to answer your questions. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Beckley. Any questions, comments?
No comments or questions yet. We'll see you on election trail.
Thank you. Mike Flickinger? If you'd state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Mike Flickinger, and I live at 6781 Burnett Lane. I first want to thank council for affording me the opportunity to address you tonight. My issue for tonight is fire and EMS coverage for the Jerome Township residents of Tartan Ridge. By now, all of you should have received and hopefully read my letter on this subject. While I do not While I do not expect immediate action and instant gratification, I wanted to use a citizen comments opportunity as another means of ensuring this topic remains on council's to-do list and is not forgotten. As all of you are long-serving members on this council, you are all familiar and painfully aware of this situation and its history, so there's no need for me to go into those details, save the following. City required Washington Township to be the fire and EMS provider for Tartan Ridge. Yet, without Washington and Jerome Townships conforming boundaries, a mechanism needed to be created to compensate Washington Township for providing fire service to the Jerome Township residents. To date, the mechanism created, the Fire New Community Authority, has proven a failure at fulfilling this obligation. Although I suspect that council is up to date on the latest and current information regarding this situation, I want to offer the following. First, Washington Township officials have publicly stated multiple times that due to lack of compensation, they will soon decide to stop providing fire and EMS coverage to the Tartan Ridge Jerome Township residents, leaving the coverage to Jerome Township. Second, at the latest Jerome Township trustees meeting, a community authority board member noted the authority is moving to sever its relationship with Washington Township for fire and EMS. These two decisions essentially leave the Tartan Ridge Jerome Township residents with two options. One, execute an easement with Washington Township for fire and EMS to be billed separately, the details of which are still not clear. Or two, decline Washington Township's offer and accept service from Jerome Township. Fire and EMS coverage is not like contracting with a lawn care service or a house cleaning service, where a resident's decision essentially has no effect on a neighbor. Rather, a piecemeal patchwork system of fire and EMS coverage, a situation the city desired to avoid, can have significant life safety effects on neighbors. One can easily, one can easily create a hypothetical yet entirely realistic scenario to illustrate this point. For example, Resident A chooses to contract with Washington Township for fire and EMS services, while Resident B, his neighbor, chooses Jerome Township. Resident B notices smoke coming from his neighbor's house, so he dials nine-one-one. Resident B's house would be tagged as a Jerome Township house, though the fire's at a Washington Township house. The general public is constantly reminded that in an emergency, every second counts, and time is of the essence. Does the city, and do we as residents, want to either one, hope your house is tagged in the system correctly, or two, take the time to explain to the nine-one-one dispatcher the situation of differing providers? I know my answer, and I suspect it's the same for anyone polled. And the scenario I described above is assuming everything is entered into the system correctly. What about data entry errors, or billing mistakes, or any other unintentional human error? I do not speak for my neighbors, nor I do, nor do I represent them in any capacity. However, it is fair to say that I am representative of them, someone who is completely frustrated and frankly disappointed that a situation like this was even allowed to develop. The entire situation was caused by the inability of three political entities, Dublin, Washington Township, and Jerome Township, and one pseudo-political entity, the Fire New Community Authority, to reach an agreement that both functions and makes sense. While I understand you cannot force people into agreements, especially when there is history to overcome, it does not change the fact that while the residents had no part in this, in creating this situation, this mess, it is we who are forced to spend precious time, professional talent, and in some cases, money on legal representation to bring resolution. Yes, a number of residents are frustrated. Yes, a number of residents are disappointed. And yes, a number of residents are getting angry. I respectfully request that you, the council, not let down your residents. Please, re-engage Washington and Jerome Townships to bring a functional and common-sense resolution to this situation. Residents should not have to worry about who is providing their fire and EMS coverage. It should just be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flickinger. John Van Norman?
Tim, I'd just like to say that-
He's going to speak to the same issue, if you may.
Okay, I'll wait then.
Yeah. If you'd state your name and address for the record, please.
John Van Norman, ninety-three forty-three Burnett Lane. First, I just want to say thank you to the mayor and councillors for allowing me to speak. I really can't add more than what my neighbor has indicated or provided for you. I think he did an excellent job summarizing everything, but I just wanted to speak briefly today to put another face to this problem. I think it's easy to say, to summarize, that this situation is a complete mess, and what started as a simple frustration for those of us who live in Jerome Township has now reached the point where we do have some serious safety concerns. We hear differing things from differing groups. We hear that Jerome Township cannot tax us to pay for the fire and EMS service because we reside in the city of Dublin, that thus they're not interested in providing us service. Then we hear Washington Township is not being paid, so obviously, they have, you know, some objections to providing the fire service, and at the end of the day, we can't help be extremely frustrated that the Community Development Authority, which was created for the sole purpose of providing the coverage, that the trustees of the authority have chosen to use the money raised not to pay for the fire and EMS service, but rather, from what we can gather, for road improvements in the area, for example, the roundabout near the Jerome High School. And so, as a result, we are just extremely frustrated by all this, and I can see by some of the reactions, we're not entirely sure, because when we speak to the different parties and the Community Development Authority, we hear a multitude of answers, and that's why we are coming to the city council to ask, respectfully request and ask for your assistance to try to bring some clarity and resolution to this matter so that we can sleep safe at night. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. I'm going to open up for comments, but I just want to say, first of all, in response to Mr. Flickinger's comments, yes, we are painfully aware, and we have, of this situation, we have received your letter, and staff has been regularly updating us with respect to the status of the matter, and we're going to have staff comment in a minute, but Mike, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I just wanted to briefly say that I've been at the last two meetings, council, on behalf of council, to be involved, to understand and listen to the issues. So, we are very much aware of what's going on. This problem will be fixed. Legal council's involved with it, staff's involved with it, Marcia Grigsby. There was no money that went, that I'm aware of that went into the roundabout out of, out of that money. The, the whole setup is strange. I think there were four-point-two mills that were supposed to be set aside, point-two of which was supposed to do fire and EMS. The other four, who knows, it's supposed to be construction, but from what I can gather, there's been no money spent except on legal bills, so there has been no money diverted to any road projects, certainly not the Jerome Roundabout. But I will let you know that we are very much involved, council's involved, staff's involved, and then, and we're going to have Jennifer Reidler speak to this, I think. Is that right? So, thank you for your concerns, and we're aware.
Mary Lee, did you want to come in?
No, I was just going to have, ask Marcia to comment about the roundabout, because that's definitely-
Yeah, the, the roundabout at Highland Croix and Brand is not funded in any way by the Tartan Ridge. That, that project is, is funded through the city, and we're using Tartan West service payment revenues that we're, are coming from the Tiff District that were established. It was established back in oh-four, I think.
And just to echo what Mike said earlier, you know, we're aware of the problem. We've been working with Washington Township and Washington Township's legal council to come up with an alternative mechanism for collecting that fire fee, and so, again, working with the authority, which did pass the resolutions, which took the fire charge off the tax rolls for that property, and working with the township. Now, they're, it's my understanding that they're working with the residents to explore the easements, and then there would need to be a service agreement put in place after that to actually collect the money for Washington Township.
Jennifer, where is the money? Was it collected from all the residents that were supposed to participate in this fire fund?
There's been, I think, a fundamental breakdown in the way, in the funding formula and the way it's been collected. I know there has been money collected. I haven't, you know, I'm not aware of all the specifics, because it is the authority's books, but it's my understanding that they haven't collected at the rate that they would have needed to collect to pay the fire levy charge.
So, the residents didn't pay the appropriate amount for the fund?
Well, I, I think that that's been a breakdown with the formula, and so-
Actually, the Union County Auditor's been involved as well, and has been at the last two meetings. So, very aware.
Let me get this straight, so, and who's administering this fund?
The authority has, is in charge of collecting the funds, well, actually, the Union County Auditor is involved, and they certify amounts to the auditor, who then collects funds. And we've been given copies of some of their accounts, and consistent with what Mr. Keenan said, it does appear to be legal fees are the majority of the expenses coming out of that fund.
And the legal fees are related to?
To just the organization administration and obviously these issues.
So, this is a Jerome Township function, really?
The community authority is an independent body. It's outside of, it was created to help collect the money to reimburse Washington Township, but it's a separate entity from the townships and the city.
And is it my understanding that the, the authority is controlled by the developer?
Right now, it is, correct. I believe four of the seven members, and there's representation from the township and from, from the two townships and the city on the boards.
Who's the developer for this project?
Edwards.
Okay.
Marcia and Steve, refresh me, my memory, if you will. Our policy is that whenever something is annexed into the city of Dublin, we immediately go and have it annexed into Washington Township. For some reason, we did not do that in this case.
Yeah, this, this had to do with the annexation law changes that occurred several years ago with regard to how the annexations were requested, whether it was a regular annexation or an expedited annexation. If it was an expedited, then the boundaries could not be adjusted, and this was an expedited annexation request. And as a result of that, it remained in Jerome Township, and the issue with regard to their levy, it was written in such a way that when property, if any property is annexed into a city, then the, their fire and EMS levy is not allowed to be collected, because their levy language states that it's only in unincorporated areas. So, therefore, they could not collect their, their levy for the Jerome area once it became part of the city. So, that's when we started the discussions with Washington Township. And the one thing, I mean, I, this has been what seems like a very long process. We've had conversations at staff level, probably as early as three years ago, trying to resolve it between Washington and Jerome and the city, trying to see if there's some way we could extend the boundaries to make it Washington Township and make reparations payments to Jerome Township, and we looked at some different options and alternatives with regards to calculations. We thought Jerome Township may be willing to accept that. They were not, and told us that they didn't want to continue the discussions with regard to reparations. Then at one, one point after that, we had some discussions about the possibility of trying to work with them to modify the boundaries again. Council even, even authorized, in conjunction with Washington Township, to pay some additional legal fees to get that done, but Jerome Township didn't move forward with that. So, after that point in time, we started having conversations with Washington Township and their legal council, trying to address the issue. So, we've been working on this for the past couple of years. The one thing to note, even though the residents that are there now, it's been painful for them and it's taken some time, there, there are very few homes or lots that have been developed, and that's why this is now coming up more as an issue than it did several years ago. I think there are twenty-four, twenty-five lots, maybe, or maybe as high as thirty-
Thirty, thirty-five.
-that currently have homes, and the majority of those happened within the last couple of years. There's a total of potential ninety lots in this area, so we're continuing to work with the residents in Washington Township, and our goal is to get this resolved. We recognize that these are our residents, and we want to make sure they have good fire and EMS service, and work with Washington Township to be able to provide that service.
So, there no process that the residents could start an annexation request? Is there no process that they could gather together and file for that?
Could do a de-annex.
To change the boundaries, you mean?
To change the boundaries, the annex into Washington Township.
There's some rules that allow de-annexation, I think, from one to the other, but I don't know what the new changes with the-
Yeah, I mean, that's something we can continue to look in. I, I don't know that, what guidelines or legal ability we would have to do that, but we can, we can look at that. The other thing that we continue to have as an option is to work with Jerome Township and Washington to try to conform the boundaries, but that will, it will need to have agreement amongst all three parties in order to do that.
That would require cooperation, which is difficult.
So, you'll investigate the possibility that the residents can initiate an annexation into Washington Township?
It's a de-annex.
Yeah, they would have to be, because they're already annexed into the city.
They're in Washington Township. No.
No, they're in Jerome.
No, they're in Jerome.
But they're in Dublin, and that's the-
But they're in the city.
But they are in the city. They'd have to de-annex from the city.
So, we'll, we'll look into what, if there are any other legal options, and Washington Township also has legal counsel that they've been working with and will work with their legal counsel.
Let me just say it's noteworthy, too, that Washington Township is not going to walk away from those residents at this juncture or anytime soon, so rest assured, and Chief, the fire and EMS service will continue. We will work this out.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to, I guess, ask and clarify. When there is an emergency, what happens and what's going to happen for the foreseeable future?
Chief, could you come over here, or?
I mean, it sounds like the residents, there's some concern that they, you know, may or may not have fire service from Washington or Jerome.
Washington Township Chief, will?
We have provided the service up until this point with no questions asked. We, until we've come up with another better option, we continue, or we intend to continue to provide the service. Now, what we have said is this, and, and we've heard a number of issues with regards to quote-unquote "legal actions" and that sort of thing. When originally this started, actually, I think the discussion started back in two-thousand and three, somewhere along those lines, the original, when we see documents of two-thousand and five, and we're talking eight years. Now, in the last three to four years, this discussion has really kicked up, as Marcia said, and what we have said when we entered into this agreement is that the existing residents, city of Dublin, Washington Township, had to be made whole, and that we couldn't continue this forever. And I think that's the discussion that we're having now. Unless we take some definitive action, unless we go into the action mode, this could go on for years, and it literally could go on for years. We have come up, and you can, you can see how complex this is. We have come up with what we think is the best worst-case scenario in order to provide that service. At that, at that point in time, it'll be up to the residents, at least the thirty that are existing. We've taken action to, for the other sixty or so lots to have this included and documented onto their deeds, but it'll be up to those existing thirty residents, and to be honest, they have been very cooperative and frank, you know, they're willing to pay for the service. It's just been the process of getting that payment that has been, it's been a nightmare.
Which is collected by the authority, correct?
It's, well, yes, and it's supposed to be collected by authority. Some of it has been built, some of it hasn't been built. The authority, or actually, Edwards, did pay for some of their non, the lots that haven't been built upon yet. We have not received payment. Actually, I think they authorized the last meeting to go ahead and forward what they had collected. But again, thinking, if you go back with the history here, again, in two-thousand and five, when the original documents were created, we have had two levies already gone to the voters that have adjusted the millage, and we're still dealing with the initial discussions back in two thousand, early two-thousand and five. So, it is a very complex issue. We share their frustrations, trust us. We have tried with Jerome Township, and I think even at the last meeting, Jerome was very vocal in the fact that they don't intend to detach that parcel, for whatever reasons. So, again, we're pushed into the worst best-case scenario, and that's where we are at this point in time. Now, we have, I've talked to Jay in Communications, that is being, it's in the city of Dublin, that does come in to Dublin CAD for the dispatch, and it would just be a matter of tagging those lots at that point in time, to which are going to be into Township, Washington service, or which, those that wish not to. But again, it's very complex, and it's, it's been longstanding, and as of now, they have our service. I think we intend to keep that service right up to the point where the decision has to ultimately be made, but we cannot, and I'll speak for the fire department, not for our trustees. I think the decision is, we cannot allow this to go on forever.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it. Mr. Mauer? Mr. Mauer?
Your Honor, members of council and of the city establishment, of the city management establishment. I think I can provide a bit of pleasure for you this evening by telling you that I was called out in no uncertain terms about the things I said and my attitude towards the Nestle Corporation setting up a food surveillance agency in the city. Called out. You'll never guess in a hundred years, it called me out. It was one of my sons. And he said, the kindest adjective he used, the kindest adjective he used in denouncing what I did was idiotic. And he used other adjectives which I can't, which are not printable, not usable in this kind of society here, though I know everybody in the world does use those words. Anyhow, there's a German word for that. It's schadenfreude. Delight in the difficulty one's gotten oneself into. Well, he says it's idiotic because, look, the FDA is standing there. In due course, they will examine the food. And in due course, the Center for Science in the Public Interest, which you may or may not have heard of, but which has probably kept you very healthy and saved your lives on numerous occasions during the last 30 years by... For example, one of the things they've done is get labels on the food. And if you know how to interpret the labels, you can maintain a considerable degree of health. Well, at any rate, he said, there's machinery standing in order to take account of the food that's produced by Nestle. Now, I rather think I stand alone in what I'm going to bring up now. But as other people in my position have sometimes said, here I stand. Especially a delight of the video which you saw this evening. But because you know, at the last council meeting, I expressed my disappointment and distaste that you hosted the university coaches of the country to do a rally here. And my bottom line was, you might remember, and I have still to deliver that, my bottom line was that I had delivered an argument last November to a considerable portion of the university in which I argued, and an argument which nobody was able to refute and won't be, that football should be abolished in the university, in universities. It has nothing to do, nothing to do with what goes on in university. So I, um... Standalone's not first time on that issue. And I regret that you are going to do it again next year. And I'm prepared to argue the point anywhere, anytime. I told you I will probably bring in at some point my argument and take as long as is necessary and useful to put it before you. It's a huge issue. It's, but it is distracting and corruptive with respect to what goes on at a university. So I will yield my time. I could yield it to myself, couldn't I, for another minute or so?
Mr. Mauer, I just want to make sure you understand, and maybe it doesn't change your argument, but the individuals attending this event are high school students. You understand that, right?
Oh, I understand that. That's just perpetuating the problem.
Okay.
Understand it fully. And also, you're making impossible pressures upon kids. About 0.005 of whom will ever make it into a professional football team. And you're... Well, I'll go on with this at the appropriate time, but there I stand.
Okay.
And I regret you're going to do it again next year. And I will bring it up again.
Thank you.
You are very welcome, indeed.
Moving on to consent agenda portion of our agenda, would ask if any council member wishes to remove any of the four items listed this evening on the agenda. Hearing nothing, I would move that we approve the actions requested for the four items listed on tonight's consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
And if you call for the vote?
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mayor Leclercy.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring. Ms. Genesee Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Thank you very much. Moving on to what's listed on our agenda this evening is postpone items. Ordinance 60-13 and ordinance 61-13.
Execution delivery, execution delivery of a development and tax increment financing agreement, an infrastructure agreement to provide for the first phase of redevelopment of the Dublin Village Centre declaring an emergency. And ordinance 61-13, authorizing the city manager to execute and deliver documents on behalf of the city to accept title to a parcel of real property within the Dublin Village Centre and to transfer that parcel back to the original owner and declaring an emergency.
I'll move the table.
Second.
Any discussion?
No. Based upon the discussions with the parties, we would request that the legislation be tabled.
Very good. And can we call for the vote on both of those simultaneously? Okay. And if you call for the vote on both ordinance 60-13 and 61-13?
Sure. Ms. Genesee Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring. Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mayor Leclercy.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Moving on to the second readings, beginning with ordinance 67-13.
This is an ordinance, ordinance, I'm sorry, amending ordinance 8297, the Rusili TIP passed June 9, 1997, to supplement the description of eligible infrastructure improvements payable from TIP funds pursuant to that ordinance.
Thank you. Ms. Muma?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. We are requesting approval of ordinance number 67-13 this evening, which would amend the Rusili TIP. This TIP, as outlined in your staff memo, was established in 1997 for the purpose of constructing Venture Drive, which you can see in front of you here this evening. In 2003, council modified that TIP. It was originally set up as a straight TIP, but after the construction of that drive was funded, it did shift to a non-school TIP. And the improvements to perimeter drive from Emerald Parkway from Avery-Mearfield Drive, including the intersection of Avery-Mearfield Drive, and improvements to Avery-Mearfield perimeter loop and Avery-Mearfield Drive and post-road intersections were added to the listed improvements to the ordinance. Some of those projects are slated to be completed in 2017. This evening, we're asking to modify the TIP one more time to include the I-270-US-33 interchange, which would include the widening of US-33 from I-270 from Avery-Mearfield Drive, to the addition of public improvements that are allowed within the TIP legislation. We have provided the notification that we are required to, to both Toll's Career Center, as well as the Dublin City Schools, and are requesting approval this evening.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Anyone? Okay. And if you call for the vote, please?
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring. Ms. Genesee Zerker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber. Mayor Leclercy.
Yes. Great, thank you.
Ordinance 71-13, authorizing provision of certain incentives to DeSillian Healthcare LLC to induce it to locate an office and associate operations and workforce within the city, authorizing execution of an economic development agreement.
Thank you. Ms. Gilger?
Good evening. Nothing new to add from the first reading, but I will quickly recap that DeSillian Healthcare is looking to create 22 jobs in Dublin. They will have an office and laboratory environment, and they are a wholesale specialty in infusion pharmacy. The deal before you this evening includes a seven-year performance incentive of 12% for 10 years valued at $21,000. This evening, I have CEO George Briznicki, I hope I said that right, and CSO Kenneth Ford are both here from the company. I invite them to the guest podium, and we can answer any additional questions for you.
Great, thank you. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, council members, distinguished members. Thank you for the opportunity to let us speak here this evening. DeSillian Healthcare is a, as Pauline has said, is a specialty pharmacy. It's a very unique healthcare business. We focus on very sick people with diseases such as MS, RA, HIV, cancer. And we've been in, I've been in healthcare for 24 years. We think Dublin is a great place to provide this healthcare entity. Again, this is a very unique entity. It's not just like your regular retail pharmacy. These are medications that cost thousands and thousands of dollars. They require very special and attentive care. So we're here this evening. We hope for the opportunity to be here in Dublin, and we look forward to being a long member, a long employee for Dublin.
We'd certainly like to welcome you. I wonder if you could tell us a little bit about what led you to decide to locate in Dublin?
My name is Kenneth Ford. I'm the chief strategy officer for DeSillian Healthcare. And we chose Dublin. We actually looked at numerous cities in Columbus. We're all residents, all the owners of the business are residents of Columbus. And what appealed to Dublin, being in the healthcare business, you know, the infrastructure for the logistics of transporting these highly sensitive chronic disease medications is very important. So get these medications to very, very sick folks within the state of Ohio in a very timely fashion. So what is very appealing to us was definitely the infrastructure of Dublin, but also the highly skilled employee pool that we have in Dublin. Being, you know, in healthcare, and especially in the pharmacy business, there are other competitors, obviously, in the city. And, you know, with us being, you know, a company that's going to be hiring where our competitors are letting folks go, it gives us the opportunity to retain some of those employees within the pool of Dublin city.
Can you tell us a little bit about the nature of the jobs, just briefly? I mean, are they, are they scientific?
So we have a wide variety of positions. Most of them will be clinical in nature, led by very specialized-trained clinical pharmacists. And these pharmacists are trained in these specific disease states that we're talking about from a chronic disease standpoint. We're not just kind of a pharmacy where you come in, grab the medication, and leave. So once we've dispensed the medication, we have our clinical pharmacists follow up with these patients. As we all know, the one constant in healthcare is change. Patients right now, with the ACOs and the readmission rates into the hospitals, it's imperative that we're able to maintain and keep up with these patients from a clinical standpoint, and that we're managing the side effects of the patient. With chronic disease, patients usually have secondary and tertiary diseases that impact them, and it causes exacerbations, and it causes them to go to the emergency room or unannounced office physician visits. So what we do is, we're very clinical in nature. We have an infrastructure and operating system that allows us to do this, and it allows us to follow up with these patients daily, weekly, monthly. We call for every refill. We call for every type of an exacerbation. We look for side effects, and we try to intervene on behalf of the patients.
So you're, you're distributor to the patient. In the pharmacology of your profession, are you manufacturing these drugs here? You're mixing them here for each patient for their particular malady, or?
That is correct. We do have a USP 797 compounding room, where we will be mixing medications. We will have pharmacy technicians that are state-certified. We'll have clinical pharmacists, and they will be the ones who mix in these compounds.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Again, welcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if you call for the vote, please?
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mayor Leclercy.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring. Ms. Genesee Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Thank you.
Welcome to Dublin.
Thank you.
Ordinance 72-13.
Authorizing provision of certain incentives to Prospects LLC to induce it to retain an office and associated operations and workforce within the city, authorizing execution of an economic development agreement.
Thank you. Mr. Clary?
Good evening. No new items to report since first reading, but just to recap briefly. Prospects is, has plans to retain 25 employees in Dublin and potentially create 50 new positions in the next three years. So the incentives before you are a 15% performance incentive on new withholdings, and that's capped at $15,500, and a location grant of $2,500. Unfortunately, the company's CEO was not able to attend tonight, but he does have plans to attend a meeting in September to acknowledge the incentives and give you a little bit more background about their, their plans for the future.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And if you call for the vote?
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Genesee Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring. Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Leclercy.
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to the introduction of, and the first reading of ordinances, ordinance 74-13.
Authorizing provision of certain incentives to G-Tech North America Corporation to induce it to locate an office and associated operations and workforce within the city, authorizing execution of an economic development agreement.
I will introduce it.
Thank you. Mr. Gracia?
Good afternoon, council. This is the introduction of the economic development agreement with G-Tech North America. G-Tech Corporation is headquartered in Satama, Japan, and is the parent company for G-Tech North America. This company will be establishing an R&amp;D research facility in Dublin, which includes the creation of 77 new full-time positions, primarily in the engineering industries, professions. The location will serve as the R&amp;D facility for the design and development of parts and manufacturing equipment for all the related companies, the six companies that they have in North America. This is a major supplier to our friends in Marysville, Honda. And this agreement is, includes a $30,000 location grant tied directly to the purchase and renovation of a 30,000-square-foot facility in Dublin. And also a five-year, 12% performance incentive. The city would net approximately $400,000 in income tax over the terms agreement. That'll answer any questions?
Any questions?
I just had a quick question about, have they made a decision that they can actually announce a location in Dublin?
Absolutely. So they are, will be purchasing 325 Kramer Creek off Franz Road. Standalone building. Those renovations will start, actually, very, very soon because they have to meet a very tight timeline that they've gotten from the leadership in Japan. So we've met with, with their local management. They actually already have 750 employees in West Jefferson, and 1,800 in North America, and 6,500 worldwide. So this is a consolidation of all of those research and development activities of North America.
That's excellent. Thank you.
So are they, I understand, I understand that. So they're also supplying like Nissan and Toyota in Kentucky, or just solely Honda?
Yes.
Just Honda?
Yes, majority, yes.
Okay. If there are no other questions, we'll have the second reading on September 9. Thank you. Ordinance 75-13.
Authorizing appropriation of a 0.299 acre more or less present road occupied fee simple interest to 0.296 acre more or less present road occupied fee simple interest to 0.069 acre more or less permanent easement and 0.073 acre more or less temporary construction easement from Brandway Limited and declaring an emergency.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you. Ms. Hott?
Good evening. This is a section of present road occupied and easements necessary for the construction of the Kaufman Brand Roundabout. The city has been working in good faith with the property owner, Brandway Limited. They have been very amicable negotiations. The challenge has been their lender and lender approval. And so we feel this is necessary to take this step to move forward in working with their lender for the necessary approvals to obtain the PRO and easements for construction. We're asking for emergency because, as you know, things are a little busy up there right now.
Any questions? If there is not, I would ask if there's a motion to treat this legislation as emergency.
So vote.
Second.
Thank you. And if you call for a vote?
Mayor Leclercy.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Genesee Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring. Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Thank you. And on the ordinance?
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
And on the ordinance?
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Genesi Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
And on the ordinance?
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Genesi Zerker.
Yes.
Mayor Leclerc.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
And on the ordinance?
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Genesi Zerker.
Yes.
Mayor Leclerc.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Thank you. And on the ordinance?
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Genesi Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
And on the ordinance?
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Genesi Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
And on the ordinance?
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Genesi Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
I'd suggest at this time is that it's important, and we'll hear from MKSK, our local urban design firm that's been helping us in this effort, that it's important to have a critical, substantial urban edge to really highlight and frame the park. And the exact height of those buildings, it's still to be determined at this time, but there is some opportunity to take up the existing slope where the driving range is presently, to kind of work with that and kind of minimize the height of certain buildings in this particular area. But clearly, we don't want to wall off the river and the rest of the Bridge Street district. So those are urban design considerations that we'll be looking at and taking a very close look at once development proposals do come forward. And again, I do also want to mention that when development proposals do come forward, there is going to be opportunity for public review and comments, again, at those early levels, to make sure that these ideas are really put to the test.
Well, if you mention it, though, people are going to come in and expect it. You can't say, oh, we don't want it then. And I am concerned about the walling off, the fact that as you go up the hill, that they're totally blocked from a nice view going down. I'm also concerned, and I mentioned this earlier, about overbuilding and expecting, you know, having too much come in as far as being built. And so part of my concern on that would be that we make sure that if the cycle of popularity turns around or stops, that these buildings are able to be adapted in a way that it doesn't look out of sync for future possible transitions.
Absolutely. I think that a certain amount of density of a variety of different types and uses is really important to help support existing businesses in Historic District, new businesses that might develop as a result of the exciting plans that we're recommending in the public realm, as well as just to, you know, keep pace with existing market trends and market opportunities that present themselves. But that is something that we'll be looking at and exploring, again, very carefully, recognizing that this is going to take many, many years to phase in over time.
Okay. I would be very cautious. I'm not sure that when you have that create the edge of three to six stories, I'm very concerned about that. And once it gets in print, then, you know, we have it there. And I would like us to consider, you know, I'm willing to hear other people's arguments, but I can't support it in print like that, even though it's a draft framework, which it won't be after we vote on it.
You know, Kathy, I, this is going to be a shock, but I agree with you.
I hate it when people say that to me.
Yeah, this, I mean, this just seems awfully dense to me, and I'm not convinced. I know some of these consultants that all the staff has hired talk about, you know, that we need all these new apartments. And, you know, I'm not convinced that's the case. It's an awful lot of cost, and, you know, I mean, a lot of, the argument's been that a lot of young people will come up here to work. Well, they already are. And if you look around the surrounding area around Tuttle, there are several apartments being built now. I don't know how you're going to support this with, you know, attracting the young people. I don't see it. And I think it is too dense. And also, you mentioned something that kind of concerns me. Under this code, you, well, I'll back up. You mentioned that there will be time for more public input. Really? How does that happen under this code? We used to have a process in this town where an application would come forward, residents had a chance to opine, we had a planning and zoning commission that opined, we had a city council that opined, and residents all along the way had a form in which to air their concerns or their support, what have you. Once this is approved on September 9th, we're out of the picture, I think. And I'm not going to support it.
Could you respond to that, please?
I think on a couple of fronts there. Again, this is consistent with the direction staff was given last spring with regard to the planning efforts that we've moved forward with. I think in terms of some of the specific questions of building heights and those kind of elements, if folks would like those to be added to the items that we ask MKSK to speak to from an urban design perspective at your next meeting, we can certainly do that. And from a timing perspective, from your adoption on this, that's certainly something council has to, has to determine on its own. I think the idea was, though, that to give predictability for the development side of the community, memorializing what we presented last spring, the outgrowth of that planning effort, in whatever form it finally takes, is important so folks have the understanding of what's acceptable to the city in terms of moving forward. I think from a height perspective, from an urban design perspective, I think you'll see strong recommendations from a broad range of urban designers, including the other ones we brought in, Brian Jones and others, about the strength and the edge of that, buildings along that edge, particularly given the width and size of the road and the size of the open space. Buildings have to have a certain scale to them to begin to frame roads of that width and with that level of traffic, or they get overwhelmed by virtue, especially when they're brought that close to the street. They get overwhelmed by virtue of the sheer size of the right-of-way. With regard to the residential and the density, I think, again, those are core elements of the vision plan which you've adopted. We think these are fully consistent with that. We believe this is probably one of the major development areas where that ought to occur, given the amenities that exist along the river. And I think you will see some elements of probably more office being integrated than what was contemplated initially, because those opportunities seem to be emerging as well. But I think the amount of housing that was demonstrated through the market studies to be supportable on this will ultimately, you know, be determined by the market, the rate at which things get built, absorbed, and financed. We'll have to have occupancy rates and rents that kind of justify those on a going-forward basis. We don't think there is the kind of urban product attractive to many young professionals. The last several months have included a whole series of interviews with more young professional groups, organization, young professionals at key major employers throughout the city in trying to get information both as it relates to park and buildings. And overwhelmingly, this kind of product is something they have said, were that kind of product available, we would move and want to be a part of Dublin on that, that simply that kind of product isn't here today as opposed to the more urban settings that they're located in. So we think from an economic development perspective, in terms of something that will support the continued development of the business community, which needs to attract and retain young talent, for the same reasons that kind of the core Bridge Street ideas embodied this thinking to start with, that this is probably one of your primary locations where this kind of element should occur.
Terry, what bothers me is, you made some good points to me, you know, listening, but I kept hearing you say memorialize what we approved, you know, last year. And we all, you know, even the community plan, we can make amendments. So, and I understand staff's direction because of that. What I'm concerned about is the ability to be flexible and change as we go. And so for me, I'm not, I don't want to be stuck back here, but I want to be able to reexamine where we're going. So that's the only thing that...
Well, why would this be treated different than our community plan is treated in that respect of what she's bringing up?
I think, I think that's correct. I think what we felt was a loose series of graphics that we kind of had on the website, being the only memorialization of the effort wasn't sufficient. And again, to bring this before you, to say, remind you what was the outcome, to hear from you where you have concerns or things you want to look closer, more closely at as we move forward. I would also indicate to council, we did indicate to you in a recent work session, that it is our anticipation that this will go through a much more public process, separate from what just your formal code review processes may include, because again, there are major amounts of public infrastructure designs and investments here that are also informing and will be impacted by the private developments as well. So we fully anticipate significant public processes, and because city council will ultimately have to approve the deals and the economic development deals that help underwrite the cost for some of these elements here, until there's a satisfaction with both the product, the level of public input that has been obtained to get us there, those projects won't move forward.
Terry, I'm not sure what's right or wrong, but it seems to me we gave direction with respect to density. We had that discussion back in the day. And even, I mean, even six months, a year ago, we had discussion about density. And so you're talking about height, and I understand people have some issues with mass. But I'm wondering, what kind of density numbers did we get into under the old, you know, PUD kind of process? And what does this propose? And then, you know, is there a way to put that into numbers that we can look at at our next meeting? And then maybe try to understand better, where are you trying to go? What kind of density numbers, Kathy, are you talking about, or Rick?
To be honest, the density doesn't bother me.
Well, I mean, you were talking about height and everything else, and mass, that is density.
Sure. In this particular case, but you can do it somewhere else. I mean, you can transitionalize it. So, you know, in some of these buildings, depending on the size of the unit, you could have a six-story building that has, you know, whatever, 24 to an acre, and you can also have a three-story building that can have 24 to an acre.
I'm just saying, if I was staff, I'd be confused, that's all.
Well, that's too bad that they're confused.
That's the way it happens sometimes.
Yep, so it does.
And frankly, some of these opportunities we've had with staff have been a one-way discussion. So maybe this is the first time they're hearing it loud and clear. I don't mind the walkable areas. I think that's very fine. And I think a part of the city can certainly be comprised like that. My main concern is when you're starting to build these high-rise apartments, first off, apartments, in my opinion, you know, 2,400, I'm guessing in this area, in this size city, you know, every city council up here has fought against apartments for a number of years for a lot of reasons. They're very costly, and they're really not an economic generator. So for us now to say through the experts that, you know, our employers now want this and the people at work here want this, I still find that, I'm somewhat suspect of that. I don't mind a walkable area. I think more condominiums, some offices, things of that nature, I think that's perfect. I guess it's what type of city you want to have. I mean, you want to be downtown Boston, downtown Columbus, or you want to be Dublin? And I think a lot of people move up here to get away from the concrete, not to live in it. And I think there is a way to balance this out, but I don't see with all these high-rises, what I, and I think those are mostly apartments that I'm looking at, is what the city is about. That's my main concern.
It sounds like we need some clarification, maybe with what exactly are we looking at in terms of, you know, are those all apartment buildings? This is such a departure from, you know, and we've, you know, been through this over and over through the months. We kind of all, you know, get to the brink and say, oh, my gosh, this is so dense and we're so used, as Rick said, so used to fighting against density. But I want to know more about the employers that you're talking with and their employees. I need to know more about that. This is the first that I've ever heard that we're conducting interviews like that. I need to know more, because this is, you know, we know that there are trends. We certainly had all the public involvement, the three sessions up at Wendy's and so forth. So, you know, we know that's coming. We also know that we have empty nesters, that I'm not sure where in this the empty nesters fit in. And I'd be curious about that, about your responses. And then, in terms of units, I'm guessing that we have a range that we're looking at in terms of housing units. You said there's more office looking, you're thinking now that more office perhaps than originally you thought of, however many years ago we started this, two, three? So I guess I need more information, and I'm interested in all these things. And, you know, I think that my colleagues have raised some good questions and good issues and things that for all of us to be comfortable going forward, we need to understand. And that's where I am on, you know, both sides of me, hearing the discussion and then, you know, listening to what you're coming up with in terms of information that you could share.
I think one thing to keep in mind with the conceptual nature of this, as it was put forth last March in the state of the city, that these won't be the buildings, this won't how they are, be there, how they were arranged on this. It's more depiction of a strong edge to the eastern side of the relocated roadway with, and you don't pick it up very well here, increasingly less dense product as you move up the hill. And by the time you get to the top of the hill, I would suspect that it's a product that's much lower density, much more geared towards empty nester. And there'll be a variety of these product types in here geared towards those different, those different groups, so that it's a broad range of housing types, with those two probably at their core, I think will be a significant piece of it. The walkability aspect from our perspective is very much a product of density, to kind of create the vitality that's going to support the retail and the interesting kind of locations and the restaurants and those activities here of this character and of this type. Density is the thing that unlocks it, and we also think it's something that, in terms of creating kind of environment, also meets a very, very critical need. In terms of the survey information, absolutely, we will pull that information together. We're looking at that to try to make sure as we look at, if you remember when we had the planning effort here, there was discussion about what should be in these parks. And to the extent that it's parks that have to serve Dublin today, but also have to serve the future populations that are being attracted here, what are those amenities in the park that are going to be critical that serve that broader population group? But the same thing on the housing side, and we'll certainly be happy to, and we'll definitely bring in that information, share with council, the benefit of those survey work.
John?
Terry, no, I'm in agreement. This, after all, is a framework plan and a conceptual plan, and I think we all agreed a number of months ago to go ahead with this concept. So, you know, I don't want to backwater now, and I don't think it's correct. I think all of us fought, keep the density down this town and keep the finances balanced. But I think also, in this situation, you're going to be surprised, because, one, we have a moral obligation to the businesses who bring people into this area to provide the kind of housing, the kind of young people that are going to staff these businesses. And that is, you know, we all complain about our houses and their taxes, but we also really realize that those taxes aren't really being paid by us and our houses to catch the real cost of running the city and especially the schools, which is 62% of all the money. So where we get that money is from our businesses and the people working in there. So I think, you know, this is the right approach. The entire world, I don't care what city you're moving through, is doing this exact thing. So I think as a commitment to our citizens and to the businesses that support this town, this is a really exciting concept, and it's going to make for a very interesting city within a city. And I think, I think it's really a good thing that you've worked out. I think you've, you made it tough enough, this thing, that it's a lot of hoop jumping in its own right to get it right. And if you add the architectural consulting we talked about to the element, I think you're going to finish it out, get the product you really want, that balance of brick and stucco to make it work. My question for you is, as we're talking about apartments, now, is the lower quadrant of this going to be shops? Is that the intent still?
The analysis of the retail consultants for the developers who control the site are focusing the retail, commercial pieces of it along Dale, as you will see depicted graphically by the building types there, and then trying to think through Bridge Point, how that retail can be concentrated there. There's a significant concern, and it's always a concern from a retail Main Street perspective, to have a one-sided retail street. And there's tremendous concern of just having the remainder of the first floor, the viability of it, based on some of the initial merchandising and market feasibility work they've done on that. So I think there is probably less first-floor retail extending further north. It's indefinite locations at key intersections, but not a continuous wall of it, and then a significant concentration of it in the area around Dale and to the south of that. But that's being tested with retail advisors, to developers, to see if, in fact, prospective tenants would be interested in those locations and what their concerns would be.
Yeah, because I think for this to work effectively, you're going to want to be able to come out of your unit, walk to a Starbucks, possibly a restaurant. And one reason that, although 85% of our people go shop at Easton, one of the worst aspects of the entire development was they never concluded it, I never believed correctly. The living quarters should have been on top of the shops, and then it would have been correct vis-à-vis any kind of planning for any major advanced city you see from all around the world, from Singapore to Europe. So I think they blew that component. So I would like to see us, if we could, execute that portion of this. So it is a walkable city. As your demographic surveys stated, the three of them that we had to commission, you know, these next-generation people, which don't have a lot in common with us on a whole lot of issues, I might add, seem to be completely environmental. They want to have one car, use bicycles, and they expect a different kind of living quarter. And, you know, I'm very upset the fact that at high state and these universities educate these kids, and then I see them all fleeing off to Portland, Washington, Austin, Texas, and the cool cities. So we're spending a heck of a lot of tax money to educate people in this state, and these kids are heading out to these other areas. We have to create an environment where these people want to be here and be part of this community, and that's really important. And we also, as I said earlier, have that obligation to our businesses to create the kind of youth and have them want to be here in an exciting space. I think we're sort of working on that, and I think you're also going to be surprised in the fact that this may not be all youth. There's a lot of senior citizens are probably tired of mowing their grass and taking care of their properties and want to downsize. So I think the rest of this is, and are going to be, want a walkable environment. They're tired of driving, and they just don't want to put up with it. So I think you're on the right track. I think this is good for the town, and I will support you. Thank you.
I'd like to clarify a little bit, because you do have in here, include a mix of density, housing types, green space. So you already have that in. It's not the density. It is the architectural look and feel and scale, as you mentioned. I need to be convinced that these smaller units are losing everything and they're looking like they're walled in. Density was not my issue. And by the way, the young people I know that move out of town get larger salaries than other cities. So there's a, there's a balance there, John.
Mary Lee?
Well, I think that you have presented to us what we gave you direction to do. And while you may be hearing some different thoughts tonight, still, I think you did do what we asked you to do the last time around. I guess that I'm a little confused by some of the comments of my colleagues, because this is a very small, I think it's, what did you say, tell us a long time ago, 5% of our...
Entire district is 6%.
Yeah. And that what we were aiming for, as I understood it, and still believe that this is something we should be doing, was that we really wanted to have the continuum and diversity of housing capacity in order to accommodate whoever that might be that wishes to live in our community and work in our community, or either or. And what we were lacking was this more urban kind of sense of place. And when you consider the location of this, we're not putting individual houses with, up in Sawmill Road area, that's not just going to, that's never going to happen. So this provided us that transition to the east side of Sawmill Road, which will probably always end up being big boxes, and, you know, we know another big box is going to come in on the east side of Sawmill Road now. And so I think that it gives us that level of continuum. The only question that I have about it, and I do think, I mean, I, you would receive my vote on the basis that we still will be having public hearings, we're still going to be having the ability to make changes as we do in our community plan, based on market, what the market is bearing and what goes in around it and everything. But I cannot support it if it's not going to go through a planning and zoning process. I was shocked to learn that Ohio U and a couple others are on this list as having not gone through planning and zoning and been taken care of by the art. And I just can't, this is too dramatic of importance, and the architectural component is so important that I believe strongly that it must go through what we know to be the strength process of our community, to uphold all the standards that the community has had to date. So I don't know if that's what the intent was, but it would be on that basis that I could definitely support it.
In my sense, just so you're aware, I think the scale and the sheer transformational character of these projects requires a lot of opportunities for public input, design review, and other aspects here. And I think what we ought to do for the, especially the key redevelopment sites, and if council recalls, we've identified really five major redevelopment sites in the quarter, which by the way, is about 2% of the city. It's about 300 acres on that where most of this development would take place. But for these larger-scale, master-planned areas, that we suggest to you kind of a process that'll make sure it gets the appropriate deliberation, kind of design review processes that go hand in hand with the code processes that are there as well, so that we can make sure that level of deliberation takes place.
Right. I think it demands really a public process, and I think Amy brought this up at another time recently, that that's really been a very strong foundation of who we are in Dublin, and citizens expect that. And while it may be more in a, in the area that has been viewed as more commercial, because it will have residential in it, and it will be a key area of entry into our community, I think we will get a lot of interest from a variety of citizens who would really like to influence the ultimate look and decision of it. Thank you.
I agree.
Well, Terry, based upon the comments that I think we've all heard, and you suggested that maybe MKSK, you know, in their presentation on the 9th, could speak to the height, you know, to help us, you know, if possible, reach comfort level, and why that's important. You know, you mentioned scale of the road and that sort of thing. And I guess I would remind everybody, and again, you know, it's not an identical comparison, but of our trip to Greenville, South Carolina, some years ago, I don't remember exactly the height of some of those buildings along the one side of the riverfront, but I believe they were probably at least four to five stories. You know, if I'm not mistaken, again, it's not an identical comparison, but, you know, if there are other examples like that, you know, that we could be offered, you know, for consideration. And then also the style of the living units that we're talking about. I remember in previous presentations, you know, to the extent that they'll be distinct from the traditional apartment product, you know, the two-bedroom, you know, two-bath, you know, townhome or flat, you know, that we're accustomed to seeing, you know, in abundance elsewhere on the other side of Sawmill Road and in the vicinity of the Tuttle Crossing Mall and so forth. My recollection of what's been presented to us up to this point is that this is a different product, you know, but maybe if we could, you know, have that pointed out to us in the presentation on the 9th.
Absolutely. We'll include that as well.
The one thing I know we talked about at staff level, that the September 9th meeting is not a date that is required by anything, and we've talked about having additional work sessions with council, and Ann looked at the calendar, and September 16th and October 14th are available dates. And that if it would, because this may take some considerable amount of time, and if council needs the time to get comfortable with what's being presented, that maybe an option would be to have a follow-up workshop on September 16th, and then bring it back for vote on September 23rd if council's ready at that time.
With your pleasure.
I think that would make more sense. I mean, for me, I'd like a more formalized presentation of the detail now that we've gone to the next phase of. But I agree with Rick that it needs to be set up in an interactive manner, so that we feel comfortable that it is a dialogue.
I think with that, not meaning to confuse this part of the report, but we could begin to advance, go from the conceptual to some of the stuff that's actually starting to be produced from urban design and engineering, and show in a more detailed way how that might manifest itself.
I think that another thing that's key is maybe to bring this drawing down to a street-level rendering, so that we can get a better idea, you know, what does that wall look like? Because I know there's no detail there, you know, it's just a wall. So, you know, more graphics.
Even that conceptual drawing isn't, we have development planned right there on the other side of Emerald Parkway, Riverside, the assisted-living facility. Aren't there, there are definite plans that could be plugged into those renderings, or is that what it...
It's in there.
It's in there, okay.
The nursing home is in the...
And that's what it'll, that's how it will appear.
Yes.
You know, I'd also remind everybody that we heard a lot about the bridge and high building during construction when it first went up, about, oh, my gosh, it's really, really out of place, it's really, really high, it doesn't look right. But after, it was in the community for a while, I think everybody would agree, you don't hear that anymore. It's part of the fabric of the community downtown. So just keep that in mind as well with respect to size.
Well, I think if you, I think that's a really good point. I was, sort of when Kathy was talking, I was thinking about, when you drive down, you go to Upper Arlington at this point, and the Kingsdale area, that's what they did to that area. They brought the condos and all right up to the street. And at first, you are sort of in shock if you haven't been there, because it's such a dramatic change from what it had been. dramatic change from what it had been. But now that I've been driving it a number of times, it's like, oh, of course, it's, it's like it's, I forget when it wasn't there. You know, in Lane Avenue, you see, those are low buildings, they're not high like the ones on, what is that, North, Kenny Road or...
Uh, Northwest.
Can't think of the name of it. Yeah, they're very tall buildings, really. Tremont, yeah, Tremont. Right.
Yeah, I just want to keep in mind too that, you know, we've always sort of been the leader in progressive thought here and long-term planning and things like this. But what you just brought up, Merrily, is true. And I've looked, I look at those things every day in Arlington. And, you know, I'm a little upset that, you know, not to say we're dawdling around, but, you know, let's get on with getting this thing going and setting the trend that we should be setting, that we've always set for the last 20 years here. And I'm not really happy with the speed that this thing's coming out of the chute.
Oh, we're slowing it down.
I know we are.
Okay. Well, Marcia, then, then we'll schedule a special meeting.
Yes, we will.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Staff comments?
Couple items. First, there was a memo put at your desk this evening that is a follow-up to the resolutions that were passed at the last meeting with Hilliard and Norwich Township. And this is just a follow-up as far as the staff that we'll be adding and that we'll be starting later this year, adding additional staff in our existing interview process for dispatchers. We have two candidates that we'd like to offer the job to. We only have one existing position that we plan on moving forward. We just wanted to make sure council was in agreement and aware of that. And just a couple of quick updates on some major capital improvement projects, just so that you have more current information on some timeframes. The Brand Road Kaufman Roundabout work has been initiated, the contractors are on site. And we continue to work with residents, getting feedback on thoughts about traffic patterns and things like that. So we do get those, those comments and engineering and the police department work together to see if there are any changes that need to be addressed as far as signage, things like that. Highland Croy Brand Roundabout, it's continuing to move forward. The opening date is still scheduled for September 11th, which we had talked about at the last meeting and staying on target. The Brand Road Shared Use Path, this evening we had a piece of legislation authorizing an acquisition. We plan on having back the council at the next meeting, the construction contract to award for that project. There's one other property that we'd had a conversation with that we'll be bringing back for getting, obtaining the PRO from the property owners. Franz Road, Post Road, I'm sure you've seen some cones out along there. We're going to be starting some of the work on the drainage system and we'll be doing milling and overlaying on that, on that area. So there'll be some traffic issues, but we'll work through those the best that we can. Emerald Parkway, Rings Road Innovation, you've been seeing a lot of work down there. It's moving along very well. We have, we're hopeful that this week we'll be able to get the repaving done and so that, that area will be finished up. I think those are the main, main areas. If you have any questions, we'll try to provide an update in the next council packet as well. And Ken Richardson is here if there's any detailed questions. We've got a lot of work that's going on right now. Another project that's a non-transportation project is the Kaufman Park Expansion Project. And we're looking at the options on the entrance to the rec center and whether or not we can not close the entrance off of Post Road. And part of that has to do with we're burying the overhead utilities and there's a lot of work in that area. So we're trying to figure out if we can add some temporary pavement that will keep that area open or not. But we'll make sure we get information out in as many sources as we can as far as any closures in that area. And I think that's it.
If there was any closure, can we estimate, approximate how long?
Right now, there, the thought is that it may close September 3rd and there's been discussion potentially through December. And that's what we're trying to avoid, either making that a shorter period of time or if possible to keep it open. It's the entrance into the rec center that's off of Post Road.
Is the only way to get by?
Well, we would direct the traffic up to Kaufman Park Drive and through Kaufman Park. So that's, that's the downside of doing all these projects. It does create some, some traffic issues.
Well, I didn't, I would, I would encourage you to look for a way to keep that entrance open.
Yeah, we're having those discussions. And that's it.
Thank you. John, you want to start roundtable?
Yeah, I just, I failed to note last meeting that it was our own Dr. Stoychev who won the senior run, the 5K run. So one of our own people came through and I was proud of that. And then Mr. Bickley's comment about questions, probably you don't get any questions because we're really updated on that chess match back and forth over the fence. And we're expecting to see that fence go down per the agreement or there'll probably be a lawsuit. There probably won't, there won't be a question properly, there will be a lawsuit if that thing doesn't come down. So we're expecting everybody to meet their commitment and we'll just see how it all plays out. So, and the other thing on the food truck legislation, I think we're probably going to need that as the city develops. So what I'd like to see you do is get us some different prototype legislation for controlling the food trucks and how they're inspected and the sanitary situation and all that. And, yeah, and I was just in Portland last week and I noticed in the memo that there was two huge areas where they had food trucks. I don't think we're really ready for that yet because we don't want that kind of competition for our restaurants. But I think, I'd like to see what everybody else is doing. Thank you.
Excuse me, just to be clear, while we're talking about the food trucks, John, is what you're suggesting is option number one as proposed by staff?
Yeah, I'd like to, yeah, I just want to see what, what's going on.
At least begin there anyway.
Yeah.
Is everybody else in agreement?
Yeah. I don't know if everybody's aware if you're in Dublin during the day or not, but a lot of the businesses bring in food trucks in their parking lots for their employees. And so it's not necessarily in a shopping center or whatever, but these are, so we need to be sensitive to that and perhaps talk to our larger businesses that do bring in the food trucks for their employees, get their input before we...
... sites that I've seen because those employees don't typically go to a sit-down restaurant.
Well, no, but I mean, you know, there's businesses up and down Emerald Parkway that, like I said, for their employees, it's a perk, it's, you know, something fun, Food Truck Friday or whatever. And the companies, you know, do that for their employees. And I think before we start regulating, we need to get input from those folks and take that into consideration.
I think you already got them too, Amy. Like you said, they're coming, but I would like to see it for the future that we figure it out. And I think it's a neat thing. The, on the Sunday in Scioto's, we actually recommend it that they bring food trucks in there. So our people will go to the concerts on Sunday and getting ready for Monday, but want to have a light evening and some entertainment, don't have to cook, so. And then we also recommend that we take a percentage of their sales, which I think already happened too, so it's a good thing.
Thanks, John. Merrily.
The first thing is that I would like to ask council, and I've talked to Ms. Muma and she's approved this, because it's important for her to approve it, to change the first finance committee meeting in November. It's scheduled right now for November 13th and I'll be at the National League of Cities meeting that week. And so I'm asking if we could change it to the week before on November 6th, if people have a problem with that.
There's a dedication of the town.
Well, that will take 10 minutes, so. I mean, that's a 30-minute thing. Oh, are you? Okay. I mean, that's gonna be a, that could be changed actually, but it shouldn't be more than a 30-minute dedication of a pump, so.
Could you make it this...
No. All right, thank you very much. So if you could correct our calendar for that, I'd appreciate it. I did want to mention since William Murdoch had been here and mentioned that I happen to chair the regional policy committee for them, that in the last week, one of the issues that we've been working through in the last couple of months has been the House Bill Substitute Five Bill, which is the bill about the red lights and cameras. We don't happen to, as, as you know, we've discussed this, we don't have them in our community. But for communities who have had them and, and were planning on perhaps even increasing their locations, the, the communities that are members at least of MORPC, in our discussions with them, they really do it for safety purposes. They've found that this is where people are going through red lights and that, you know, there's accidents, et cetera. And so that's where they've put them. And while secondarily you may be earning money off of it because it's a fine situation, that certainly wasn't the intention from the beginning. The substitute bill that's been introduced, and it had passed the House very quickly. And so we're anticipating in September, when the Senate comes back, that they may act on it quickly. And thus, that's why we were taking a more formalized position and opposition in discussion with our delegate, Franklin County delegation and surrounding county delegations, since MORPC is a larger than Franklin County organization, that this, this bill not only doesn't state a state standard, it allows everybody to set their own standard, except that it requires that in order to issue a ticket, you must have a police officer present at each of the places where you have these cameras. Well, that of course is not, now that sort of defeats the purpose of the camera. So I just wanted you to be aware that we have, I had conversations with Marcia and others and, and so, you know, we have been meeting with the delegation to discuss those and what might be more reasonable alternatives to that. I also wanted to ask, because we had this memo and Scott did speak to us regarding the Top Gun football camp for 2014, is it appropriate to make a motion at this time to approve the financial support of $25,000 as we did this year so that their board would know that in their negotiation with them?
That would be fine from a financial standpoint. We have the funding and are able to do so.
So I would make such a motion.
Is that bed, be bed tax money?
Yes.
Okay.
Was there a second?
Second.
And just to clarify, that's bed tax money?
Right.
Correct.
Okay. Ann, if you call for the vote, please.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zarker?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Air Luck Lighter?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Mrs. Boring?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Salee?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And last, as I briefly mentioned in Tara's case on the performance, I was going to say, and that's not the right word, presentation, I guess is the word I'm looking for. I guess I was very surprised when I read this memo that we requested, the ART. And of course, it starts with the definition of the minor project review and what's included in the minor project review, which if we formally had approved this, apparently didn't really read it carefully enough to understand it. I don't know if that was administratively done or whether council approved it. But when you look at a few of the things that caught my eye, that I felt should have gone through planning and zoning with authority, because as Kathy pointed out to me, it wasn't that like the Edwards project, it went to planning and zoning, but it had no authority. So all they were doing was giving their input into what they would suggest. So it was like when, you know, people come in ahead of time for ideas. And certainly a project of that magnitude, it would seem to me that I certainly would want it to go to planning and zoning. And also the Ohio University and the Nestle Quality, those Assurance Center, those also struck me as projects that the public might want an input in and that we might want to have closer engagement of our Planning and Zoning Commission. So I don't know where we go with this because again, it seems like it starts with the definition of what is constituted as a minor project. You know, and whether that's where, that needs to come back to us as changing and excluding some of these things, if council members, you know, happen to agree with my position on this. I don't know, Marcia, if you have a, a sense of what, how do we, how do we address the issue and...
Well, one of, one of the things that we talked about at the last council meeting was the timeframe to review the process. And I think the memo that was in the last packet discussed staff working with planning and zoning on issues and areas to look at in the code and any changes. So I think that's an opportunity to do that. And there was a timeframe as to when the, the review would be completed at P and Z level and then come back to council. And I think it finished up or ended either December or January of next year. So that, that's one way or one opportunity to do so.
I, I can, you know, I would accept that as long as it, you know, it's an awful long process for projects that are still coming forward and not being given a public review though. And so if, December I think, or January was sort of loose language. And when we've done this kind of thing in the past, we've never stuck to that kind of timeframe. Then they've always come back with a new timeframe of 90 more days or so. And I'm very concerned about the timing of this to ensure that major projects coming forward, which we know have, might very well come, are definitely going to have the kind of review whatever everybody wants to have, whatever that ends up being. So I don't know if that's just all to say, we need to stick to this timeframe then and we need to have it formally ready for us to vote on in January.
Well, and I think that's, that's the intent and part of that we'll be working through with P and Z. And the other thing is each time the agenda for the ART is sent out, if there are specific questions or concerns on any project, you know, please feel free to, to contact us and, and request any additional information that you may desire on any of the projects.
If I could just add on to what Merrily said in terms of what we're reviewing, I'd like maybe some, some graphics, some photographs of some of the signage that I'm seeing around. You know, we had that meeting at Ballantyne at the golf club, I should say, last spring and we saw a lot of, of graphics of, you know, different types of graphics and different types of signs. And in looking at some of the things that have popped up, it's not exactly what I had expected. Some of the things are, you know, interesting to be sure, but not necessarily what I would consider Dublin standard or what, what I had in mind. And I'd be curious, like I said, just to see the photographs and be able to see what we've, what we've been approving and what count, you know, obviously, you know, these are legal signs now. And so I'm interested in kind of reviewing that and then maybe going back and seeing what we could do better.
I agree with you, Amy, but I would like to add on to that. We were in Grandview this weekend in their main area that they're trying to make attractive. I would like us to compare what, because we keep saying Grandview, you know, we want to look like Grandview. I would like to see some signs from...
Grandview.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Well, that, I hear some people talk about that. But I wondered if we can get some photos of what they're doing also down there to have a comparison of where the young people like to go and hang out the bars and the restaurants. Evidently they're attracted down there, so I'd like to see some comparisons also.
Merrily, were you finished?
Yes.
Thank you.
I don't think it's young people that hang out at Grandview, but that's all right.
Kathy.
Grandview? Well, there were, there were a ton of them when we went down Saturday on Grandview Avenue. Any case, no, I don't have anything, but there were a lot of young people.
Thank you. Mike.
I just have a quick, chief, I mentioned earlier today about the cameras and I don't really need a whole lot on this, I'd just like maybe staff report later. There was an article in the paper about the, the police officers in Rialto, California that are using these and that it's made a kinder, gentler world, safer for the officers and also safer for those people that they're talking with.
You're talking about the mounted cameras that they're either wearing, the glasses or on the...
Yeah, exactly.
Sure.
I was intrigued by the article and I just thought it looked like a really good thing to follow up on and maybe look into.
Certainly. We'll provide you some information on that.
Very good. Thank you.
Is that it, Mike? Thanks, Rick.
Marcia, I'd like to thank Allison for preparing this memo with respect to the Irish Festival 5K race. And, and I'm sure the staff did send a letter out to residents in this area. The ones I talked to don't seem to have that recollection, but whatever. It strikes me, and I think I sent you a text soon after I made this... Festival 5K race, and, and I'm sure that staff did send a letter out to residents in this area. The ones I talked to don't seem to have that recollection, but whatever, it strikes me, and I think I sent you a text soon after I made this inquiry, that maybe to avoid further confusion in subsequent years, maybe we could put some signage out there a few weeks before the event and kind of put a big boundary around there, so people would know that from the hours of, you know, whether it's 5:00 to 9:00 or what have you, that this area will be closed for the race. I think I've seen this in other cities, and I think that would eliminate a lot of confusion. We do have a lot of people that drive through, you know, if traffic is bad on 270, for example, they will cut across Rings to Dublin Road, and that might have precipitated some of this confusion. Also, there at Bridge and High, some people are trying to get the dinners, to do other things, while they can plan their alternate route as opposed to just coming upon the scene, so.
Yeah, after we had, after I received your text, we had some conversation at staff level and agreed that's something that we should look at. We also talked about, since I'm on jury duty, one of the things they, they discussed...
Good for you.
Is the, the envelope that your notice comes in. They look at options to make sure that you pay attention instead of just tossing it in the trash, because they were having that problem before. So, they've looked at the design of their envelope, and so today, actually, Allison was talking about that we would look at the design of the envelope, if there, if there's something that we can put on there, whether it's the color or something that people recognize, I need to look at this. So, we'll look at options.
Okay, that sounds great. Couple other things real quick. The State of Ohio Veterans Hall of Fame will have its golf outing up at Riviera on September 16th. It's an annual event, recognizing veterans through the state. It's, it's a good event, they do a good job, and so I just want to make everybody aware of that. And also, I'm happy to report that, starting Thursday, I will be a participant in the Civilian Police Academy here in Dublin, so.
There you go.
Merrily's done that, so I thought it was good enough for her, I'll try it as well.
Great. Thank you. Amy?
I just have one thing, and I don't know if Angel or Marcia would be willing to respond to this, but there's a lot of confusion. If you look at our community survey, there's a lot of confusion about taxes in Dublin, and we had a brochure piece that was put out a number of years ago, sort of explaining the tax situation, that, you know, what the city does and does not collect, and explaining the fact that the city only collects the inside millage that we, you know, otherwise would be forfeiting to another entity, be it the township or the school. And so, people talk about taxes in the city, and, boy, we pay high taxes, they don't realize that it's not the city of Dublin that they're paying taxes to. And I, I want to figure out and maybe brainstorm with staff some ways that we can do a better job of educating our public, educating, you know, candidates. This is a good orientation piece for the candidate website, because a lot of folks don't understand about taxes. I know in my early years as a city activist, I didn't, you know, fully understand. But, you know, the, people don't look at their tax bill a lot of the time. Their mortgage company may take care of paying their taxes, they don't physically ever hold their tax bill, they don't go online and peruse it, and they don't realize, you know, it's the schools, it's the township, it's the library and the seniors, and, you know, the city actually collects a very small amount. And, and the fact is, you know, even if we were to forfeit that, we aren't going to lower anybody's tax bill. And what we've elected to do with that inside millage, you know, we've made different strategic decisions over the years, changed it a number of times just since I've been on council. So, I'd really like to get, you know, explore ways to get that information out to folks. I think it's really important that they understand how our city's funded, the fact that, you know, the business community is so vital and why that is, and it's important for everybody to understand and be clear on, on that. So, whatever, you know, we can do to forward that mission, I think that would be very, very positive for our community.
Yeah, and I actually received a voicemail from the mayor last night or early this morning, I don't know what, he was calling late, I know, on the same issue. And several years ago, we did prepare what was called the Tax Brochure, and at one point, we sent it out to all residents, and then at other points, we were providing it to new residents as they moved into town, and also provided the information out on the website, so we can look at, are there things that we can do now, and look at some of our different options that we have to communicate to the public. We'll look at maybe doing some additional articles in the newspaper, but it is something that we've struggled with for a very long time, trying to help people understand where there are taxes and the type of taxes at the city and the school district and the township that we all collect, so that they can understand the difference between the different entities and how we, how we get our revenue. So, we'll look at options that I, the idea of having information out on the candidate's website, I think is a good idea to include out there. So, we'll get together, and I mentioned it to Sandra, and she said she would start looking at ideas and options that we could come up with, so we'll provide some feedback to you.
I appreciate that very much. That's all I have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. I have nothing for the good of the order, so we're adjourned. Thanks.